Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting of December 11th, 2019. As always, I would like to remind you that this meeting is being broadcast live. It is also being recorded for use at a later date if needed, so please keep that in mind. If anyone's going to speak tonight, please get up to the podium and state your name and address and what town you're from, and we'll be glad to hear from anyone. So, I'd ask you to please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Would you also join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. An entertainer motion to approve the minutes of November 5th, 2019.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstaining. One abstention. An entertainer motion to approve the minutes of November 13th, 2019.
Some move.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Student advisory report. Tori Maum.
So, I actually spoke to Tori last Thursday. I don't know why she's not here today. Maybe the roads are a little too icy and her parents didn't let her out. I'm not sure, but I'll follow up. And I, down in letter D, under my report, I'll give a little discussion about the superintendent of council, which Tori's a part of.
Okay. All right. Superintendent's report.
Thank you. So, today, to start off, we have some good news. We have our National Honor Society advisor, Ms. Tanis, here to present some money to our food pantries after our annual fun run.
So, I'm Kelly Tanis, and I have our NHS president, Chloe Wilson, here to present our checks.
Hello, everyone. On September 28th, 2019, the National Honor Society held its 10th Annual Miles for Meals 5K and One Mile Walk. We received many generous donations in the form of raffle prizes from local businesses, and members of the community came together to support this great cause. We raised a total of $1,817 this year, so the Whitman and Hanson Food Pantries will each be receiving a check in the amount of $908. I'd like to invite Ms. Christine Cameron from the Hanson Food Pantry to come up and receive their check. And I would like to invite Mr. Bruce Perry from the Whitman Food Pantry to come up and receive their check.
Awesome. Great job.
Thank you to both food pantries for all you do for the community.
I could just say one word, a couple of words. Just year in, year out, these kids do this under the direction of, used to be Ms. Galabos, but now Ms. Tanis, and they do a great job. And, you know, every year in, year out, the students always come through for us, and we really appreciate it, and just want to commend them for that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, today in your packet, we have requests to survey some of our students from the Brocton Area Prevention Collaborative and our portion of Whitman Will. So, I have Gabby Perutchio in the audience, if she wants to come up. If you bruise the survey, which is in your packet, we've done things like this before. We gather the data, and we can address student behaviors based upon the data that we have. And it also helps them to obtain grants from the district attorney's office and from the state. So, if you have any questions for Gabby, and I believe she has the, another gentleman with her. Go ahead.
Sure. So, hi, I'm Gabby Perutchio. I am a coalition coordinator for the Brocton Area Prevention Collaborative, and that is through High Point Treatment Center's Prevention Services Department. And this is Sean Verano. He is part of our evaluation team from Kelly Research Associates. So, with, we have two new federal funding opportunities that support the town of Whitman and Hanson, and one of them is called the Drug-Free Communities Grant, and one of them is called Partnerships for Success. And so, those grants, they focus on, Drug-Free Communities is the prevention of prescription drugs and marijuana with youth under 18, and the Partnerships for Success grant is middle school prevention of alcohol and marijuana. And so, those funding opportunities will support Whitman and Hanson, and with that comes a requirement of surveying students. So, we've done surveying through the Drug-Free Communities Grant. In the past three years, we surveyed grades eight through 12, and that was approved through school committee. And so, what we've done is gotten it approved, we've surveyed the students, and then we present the results back to you to get approval to, if we want to share it with our coalition or the community in any way. So, this year, we'll have the opportunity to survey grades six, seven, eight, nine, 11, and 12. And we would be seeking your approval to expand that to the middle school, to survey grades six and seven as well. So, if you have any questions about the survey, you have a copy of the survey, I think, in your hands. It's about a five to 10-minute survey. There's also a sample passive consent form that is used by the school to ask for parents' permission, and if they do not want their student to be participating in the survey, they can opt out.
Anyone have any questions?
I have a question.
Michelle, I believe we have to vote on accepting this survey. Dawn?
Can you provide more information about the grant and what is provided with that after the survey?
Yeah.
Did I?
No. So, the, there's two grants. The Drug-Free Communities Grant is a federal grant that is for the prevention of 18 and under for prescription drugs and marijuana. And so, what we do is, so Whitman-Hanson Will is the local substance use prevention coalition here. We meet on a monthly basis with the coalition, and we bring together all different sectors of the community, so the school, police, really 12 different sectors. So, throughout the five-year grant, we work on initiatives around education of, around prescription drugs and marijuana. We provide training, awareness, policy change. We do a number of different things, but what we do with the data is use it as a needs assessment. So, the data is for us to be able to see and track student current trends around different substances, their past 30-day use, their perception of harm, and then their peer and parental perception of harm. So, we get to use that with the coalition to see what kinds of prevention initiatives we're going to put in place throughout those five years. Okay. Any other questions?
Mike?
I thought last time we voted on this, we would receive the results of this?
Yep.
And we?
So, we had presented the results back to the school committee, I believe, last year after it was finalized for the third year.
Okay.
So, then, I could be invited back and provide you with the results. So, our evaluation team will put together the result after this year's, if it's approved, and then we can present the results back in the fall.
Thank you.
And I will say that, speaking from when I was a principal, and we talked about this just with the eighth grade, one of the things that came out, talking to our counselors from both Whitman Middle and Hanson Middle, was that they would like to see it drop down to the sixth grade, because a lot of things that came out of it with the anti-vaping, with the cause, with everything that was taking place, was used in the school by the counselors' meeting with kids, but they just felt that the needs were as prevalent or as needed at the lower levels also.
And that's where the second grant will help with Partnerships for Success. We have never been able to really focus our efforts on middle school, and so that will be the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, that will be able to put some funding towards preventing alcohol and marijuana use among middle school. And that would include vaping with the marijuana piece, because a lot of the vaping devices are used for THC. So, that will be a nice, interesting addition.
You said this is the fourth year right now?
No, this is actually the first year that the towns would be funded for both of these new grants, but Whitman-Hanson has received a similar funding stream, Drug-Free Communities, with the past five years. So, this is, we're just continuing, this is just a new opportunity of funding.
And did we just do the survey last year for the first time?
No, this would be the fourth year of the survey.
Okay. I guess what I'm looking for is just if you have any historical data on the trend and just?
Yeah, I can provide you with all the results from the past three years.
The past three years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Would you try to provide us with that after you get the data from this, if we vote in the affirmative?
Absolutely. Yeah.
So, we know what the results are?
Absolutely.
Just to reaffirm, so everybody that's watching can see, this is an anonymous survey. It's not signed by a student, it's, there are no names involved, and you can opt out.
Yes.
Because that was a question that was asked after we voted at the last time. Anyone else? An entertainer motion?
Make a motion.
To?
Make the motion to accept it, go down to six, to 12.
Thank you, Mr. Culloden. Fred, second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Thank you for the board.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Gabby.
Thank you.
So, as the committee knows, we have been without a business manager, or a business manager's been out on leave, so we posted for an interim business manager, and since the position hasn't yet been vacated, I'm presenting Mr. John Tuffy as a business consultant for us. John, if you want to come up to the podium. John is the former business manager and then superintendent of the Silver Lake Regional School District, retired, and then did a stint in Cohasset as a business manager. John's experience, I think, is vital for us right now, as he was part of a regional district with regional assessments. He has vast knowledge of that. He was also part of a regional district that split in one respect. Pembroke left the regional district, so John has vast knowledge in that process and how that process evolves over time. So, as John, I've appointed him as a consultant. Once that position comes up, I will make a recommendation to this committee to appoint John as our interim business manager. He's working three days a week, part-time, he's still enjoying retirement, but so far, and he started with us last Monday, and he has given me a great wealth of knowledge already on our process, on what we have, and I think he's teaching George and I quite a few things already. So, just wanted to introduce John to the committee.
Congratulations and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Will he be attending school committee meetings going forward?
As needed, he'll be here.
If invited, I'll come. Fortunately, I don't live very far away, so coming to meetings is not difficult, and having spent a number of years working for school committees, I, I'm used to going to school committee meetings. I almost miss them.
A key word, "almost."
I did slip that in.
I think as we go forward, too, for members of the community, because different conversations have talked about deregionalization, and that's not a subject, that's not a topic I want to discuss. But if people have questions about the process and what it takes to do that, I would encourage them to email John or give John in the business department a call. He has got a wide variety of experience in that and can walk folks through that process. Again, it's not something I want, but in both communities, I've gotten feedback about what's it going to take to deregionalize and how do we do that? And again, John's an asset to us at this point, because he was part of that process. And he can then issue some advice and some guidance. So, thank you, John.
I listened, I listened on YouTube to the meeting you had with Christine Lynch, and yes, I'm from the one district that she talked about that actually went through a deregionalization, so I'll be glad to share any of that experience. I will tell you it is a long and somewhat difficult process, and...
Thank you. Thanks, George.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and again, welcome aboard.
Any questions, feel free to give me a call.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, superintendent's council, something that I've wanted to do and just didn't have the opportunity to do that last year, and actually, Ms. Ayers shot me an email about a council of students meeting with the school committee, at least, you know, twice, three, four times a year, once every other month, to have a discussion with the committee. So, I formed, I asked Dr. Jones to get some student leaders involved. We met last Thursday over pizza, and they educated me on some of the things that they really love about our school and things that they want to do better. And I asked them if they would be willing to share their thoughts and answer questions from the committee at a given time before a school committee meeting, and they said yes. So, I'm throwing it out to the committee, if we want to set something up with these group of students, I don't think they want to stay through a whole school committee meeting. Some might, some might not, but maybe after facilities, on the opposite of a facilities meeting, have these students come in as the committee wants to come in. It doesn't have to be a full panel, we'll post it as an open meeting, but they're willing to share their thoughts with you, and I'd like to see that move on, continue on over the course of the year. They have great insight. They're truthful.
What we can do, Jeff, if we're going to do it every other meeting or whatever we determine, we can put them right in the front of the meeting, such as a student advisory report, put them up front. They can determine if they want to stay or if they have to go if they have school projects or whatever they have going on. Sometimes meetings get, they could look at the agenda and not want to stay. We put them right up front, give them some latitude to do whatever they want. Some of them might want to be involved with government and...
Absolutely correct.
And that's a good thing. Anyone else? Robbie?
No, I think that's an excellent idea, because as you're talking about it, it was interesting when we were doing the superintendent's search, talking, the four of us did, with kids from Whitman-Hanson, we're doing the interview, in, number one, how articulate they were, was very impressive with it, but then just getting their perspective on things was very, very interesting. So, yeah, yeah, excellent idea.
Chris?
So, I think it's a great idea as well. What grade levels we were focusing on, was it just high school or would we go?
So, for this right now, it was high school, and I think as we evolve that, we can, we can do whatever the committee wants to do. I'm going to meet with high school kids right now. It's easy for me in the office. We are getting out more and more and speaking to different groups of elementary kids, not necessarily a sit-down, but that's one of my off-the-record goals, is to have a sit-down and have lunch with a couple of elementary kids with their principal to find out the real scoop on there, too. And the brutal thing is that kids are honest, no matter who's sitting in front of you. It's Ms. Downey or Mr. Trantor, they're going to tell you what it is. And as Dr. Jones and I had heard, it was, we said, good, bad, or indifferent, let us have it, so we can make decisions and make plans. And it was, it was a great meeting. It was a great meeting.
Mr. Boy from the, Mr. Small, I think Fred had his hand up, too.
Okay, thank you. It is an excellent idea. Student government people mostly, or?
So, we took two leaders from NHS, two leaders from Key Club, and two leaders from student council, including Tori, who's the president of the student council. So, we had seven, we'll have eight. A person was on the AP language field trip that day. So, we're just taking student leaders, it can be nine through 12, they can be the president, and we can rotate that as much as we want. We wanted to start small, and we can evolve as we go.
And do you mind, as a side, for Dr. Jones, we have a healthy school, student government or student council? Was student government when I was here?
We, our student council's actually...
I'll need a little more. Thank you. I'm sorry I have it.
Mr. Small?
I was going to say, and it's probably not going to be something anyone would want to consider, but if we wanted to switch our facility meeting, we'd only have basically the matrix on the meeting for January and then be able to devote more time for just a special, but I'm pretty sure the whole committee's going to want to be involved. I don't know if the whole committee wants to come to the facilities meeting, but I just want to throw that out there.
Okay. Yeah, we'll put them right up front, and that way they'll get a taste of everybody. Everybody will get an idea of what it's going to be like, and then we'll go from there. Again, part of it is, is to get their input. We want their input. Dawn? Chris, you just, no, Steve.
Oh, you. Okay. Thank you for taking the suggestion. I heard about it or listened to other students last month when I went to the MAS C conference in Hyannis, and there was a panel of students there. It was really interesting. A lot of, or those students who were there, some were appointed, some were elected by their peers at the high school. Some, the majority were juniors and seniors, but one school was a freshman, and she was more or less chosen from eighth grade coming up. So, the intention for that school is that freshman will stay the whole four years, should she choose to. But it almost, some of the seniors spoke that it took them a few months, it took them half a year to really get comfortable speaking to adults, and although you said, Jeff, some of them will just tell you and they don't have a problem, but... So, there's different varieties among the different school districts that I saw, you know, and that's up for us to, you know, determine, are the students who want to come forth and volunteer? Maybe they're not all, you know, from student council or NHS. It could be an opportunity out there, hey, do you want to volunteer and just come? So, I just wanted to share what I had heard from the other schools.
Okay.
And just to piggyback on what Dawn was saying, I don't want to see the same eight kids every time. Like, and I'm just going to pick on you because of the superintendent's search.
You're sitting right across from me, yeah.
And you know, because you had kids all walks of life.
Absolutely correct.
And you had kids that were about to fail out of school. I want to hear from all of them.
Sure.
I mean, that's great, National Society student leaders, but you know something? I want to hear from others.
Okay.
Quite honestly. I don't always want to hear from the student leaders and things, I want to, which is where you were going with it, absolutely, I want to hear from all walks of life, whether kids that like school and are excelling, kids that aren't, you know, all of it.
Maybe they need that invitation to be brought.
Oh, no, absolutely. Yeah, yeah, definitely. Piggyback, I like what Robbie was saying, because the superintendent's search with the finalists, the students Jeff had brought in and the other two finalists, such a diverse... Yes, yeah. It was, it was in the other schools, it was a very diverse, and just listening to some of their, you know, accolades for the people, because what I was going to say is, you know, you're going to beg one of the kids walk in the hall, bring him. Because, you know, because...
They'll tell you what...
Do what, in all cases, do what you did for the superintendent's search committee. If you had all walks.
And I was just going, the only thing, getting in the ready for the next meeting, we'll put it on the agenda.
Yeah.
We'll have kids.
Yeah. We're going to do it for a while, you can, you got time.
Everybody good? All right? Yeah?
Thanks. Dr. Jones is here. He's got a couple of discussion items on our program of studies. We have an opportunity to get some money. So, Dr. Jones?
I'll take it.
Yeah.
Good evening. I just want to say, we had an opportunity at a grant, and our, one of our business teachers, Ms. Julie Gilia, she contacted or got the forms from Next Gen Personal Finance Organization for their Gold Standard Challenge, and it has to do with financial literacy. And what they're looking for is a school that's committed to putting financial literacy in the program of studies and as one of the curriculum requirements for graduation. So, we thought it would add up, seeing that we ran a pilot this year, and we're continually running a pilot this year, and we were already looking to make it a graduation requirement. And the good news is that we won the grant and were awarded $10,000 for the implementation of this program. However, what we need to do for that is, what they need now is to see the committee's support for that, and that support coming in the form of meeting minutes and a vote to approve financial literacy as a graduation requirement for high school seniors. So, I'm coming to you tonight requesting that you do that. We've, we've run a pilot for it this first semester. It's only, looks like it's getting better. It does look viable from what we did, because we took out computer applications. I don't know if remember, we mentioned this to you before last year, so we wouldn't require any more personnel for it. And we decided that computer apps, the best way to have students learn computer applications is to apply them in another format. And so, what we've done is we've rolled the computer applications into the financial literacy course, so the students use these computer applications to do that. And along with that, we've tapped our school counseling program. We did MyCap programs to the state this year, having to do with career placement and interest. And that's in the financial literacy course as well, with counselors visiting that course, and it's rolled into the curriculum. So, it's getting more solid, it's going to be a robust curriculum when it's done. We're taking it out for a spin this year, and so far, it's been, it's been great. So, I ask that you approve it as a graduation requirement, so we can move forward and get this $10,000 as a grant. On top of that, I think it'll also help, because we just today submitted the state grant for financial literacy to support that, and that's to the tune of $11,500, which supports professional development, curriculum development, things like that.
Entertain a motion before we go into discussion. High school program of studies for a new graduation requirement for financial literacy.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Small was first.
The school year would be 2024. So, the freshmen, we would require, require, not a freshman this year, but the freshmen coming in next year would be required to have a financial literacy course to graduate.
Okay. Does everyone understand that, and we're okay with the motion, the second? Fred, go ahead, and then Deanne.
The specific areas of curriculum, part of the new Student Opportunity Act that was recently signed into legislation identifies financial literacy as a required curriculum. It's not a requirement that they pass in order to graduate, but it's a required curriculum from what I can interpret out of the law. If I'm not mistaken, we're to provide checking, so someone knows how to work a checkbook.
Yep.
What loans mean, what the obligations are if you buy or rent an apartment or a home. Very specific. I would also want to amend, amend it so that we could at least match that curriculum in addition to what we're doing. Sounds like we're going a little bit more in depth.
We're going more in depth, and I can tell you that that's already in the curriculum. That's part of the, we actually put that in to see if we can get it covered by the state grant. We have checkbook packets. We do a combination of using Excel and Google Sheets to do checkbook projects, but also there is a component where they do some old-school checkbook, where they, where they balance the ledger and things like that.
So, in other words, what I want to make sure is we're in compliance with the Massachusetts...
We're beyond compliance.
States. Perfect.
Mr. Culloden?
I'm glad to see we're doing something like this. I was going to bring this up, because I do believe our students do not, in the last four or five years, come out of here knowing how to do anything for life. Basement dwellers now, because they don't know how to get a house, don't know how to do loans. So, it's good to get that back, because I think we're so oriented in getting them to college. Only a certain amount of kids go to college, the rest have to get out there and do the blue collar work, and, you know, that's one thing I wanted to see, because we're sending, my kid has the same problem, and, you know, they don't know how to do the balance in the books. They don't know how to, you know, when they get into an agreement on a loan or something, they don't realize the penalties they're getting into and how deep they can get into it before they're 20, 21. It's, you know, and it's good to see we're actually getting that way. I mean, it was things we, I mean, when I went to schools in junior high, we had, we had to have, you know, knowledge of how to do a checkbook.
Thank you.
You had to do your taxes. You know, they brought in fake taxes. You had to do your income tax back, back in the day. You don't see that anymore. These kids just come out of here. You know, if they go to college, fine, they get a little slow start in the world, but the other ones are hitting the street, working, they come out totally coolest. So, that, it would be a good thing to see financial literacy back into schools.
Ellen?
I work in the financial field. I work in a bank, and I have for 25 years, and it's not just younger children who just recently graduated, it's adults my age who have no clue how to do any of it. It is so beyond, I guess, beyond the basics of how to balance a checkbook and things like that, how to manage your credit score and how to, how to have healthy credit and what to do with that. Is that going to be part of the curriculum?
That's, that's what I mean by we're beyond the requirements. We're doing that, we're, not me personally, but the students in the classes, they're talking about buying houses, the APR, they're talking about investing, they're talking about renting apartments, they're, they're doing all of that as far as how credit scores affect that. They're talking about all your major purchases in life and how you work around that with interest rates and debt and so forth, so...
I would love to help with that in any way I can, not just me, but the bank as well, so...
Dawn?
This is a graduation requirement. Will it satisfy a technology requirement, or will it take the place of an elective? How will that work in?
We're looking at it satisfying it, possibly satisfying a technology requirement. We want to see, that's why at the end of the year, we'll decide which requirement it would take over. The next thing I want to talk to you about, which is Advanced Algebra with Financial Applications, that course in place keeps us pretty much from making it a math requirement or fulfilling a math requirement, so the students would technically possibly be getting both of those, depending on their math course of study.[1705.82]
I guess my question was, is there's gonna be another requirement added onto their course load, but it's gonna satisfy something, it's just gonna?
Right, and we've looked at the grade that we can put it in at. We're, we're going between sophomore and junior, or saying, we might make it a soft sophomore requirement where, if they can fit it in, because freshman course loads are pretty much already decided. So we're looking at making it a sophomore requirement, but if for some reason, because of another course the student gets, or gets into or can take, then we'll let them take it their junior year. But that's all figured out in the office across the hall from us.
Doug.
One more question about the grant. When would the funds be received, do we have to wait the four years till these students graduate and fulfill it?
No, to the best of my knowledge, the funds will be released for the next school year.
Once we show implementation.
Once, once we show that it actually is gonna be, because they wanted, they wanted the dated minutes from the committee meeting and the vote, so that we can turn that in, and then Ms. Jillia will be taking a trip out to San Francisco to receive the next steps that she needs to do and any extra additional training or materials that she'd need to bring back. And that, that takes place in March, so it's my understanding the funds would be released for the next school year, which would include professional development over the summer.
Jeff.
Chris, just to quantify, it's a two-credit class, not a four-credit class?
Correct, it's two-credit.
It's just, so it's a half year.
Which means, yeah, which means half year for everybody.
Correct.
Oh, okay.
And, and we did start, we've had financial literacy in the program of studies for years. Lydia Nelson, who retired this year, was the president of Mass Business Teachers Association, was a really hard pusher on this to be a graduation requirement. And now that the state's kind of picked up a little bit, I endorse it with Chris to make sure they all take at least a semester of Finlet. And I sat in a class, and the amount of stuff that they do as far as buying a car and buying a house and what they can afford, because everybody thinks when they graduate, they're gonna get their one-bedroom apartment in, in the South End and have a big car and do all this, and then they realize it's $2,500 a month for a, for a rent, plus whatever. So I endorse that as well, for Chris.
What's the math requirements for graduation right now?
Chris would have to, I'd have to.
The math requirements?
Yes.
Four years.
No, what type, any, any math, could this replace one of the maths?
No, we're looking at this not replacing a math, because we have, we've now entered, and this is another part of my next point, is we've now started a course, Advanced Algebra with Financial Applications. So they pick up some of the financial pieces, I was in one of those courses today, classes today, actually, and they were talking about APRs and buying a house and renting an apartment and things like that. So it's looking at not being a math requirement, because then the math requirement can keep them on the track that you'll see laid out in the program of studies.
Anyone else? Thank you very much, Dr. Jones, I believe it's much needed, for anyone that's been in the car business, Fred has, I have. We run about a 70% turndown rate on financing. The problem is, they come and they go, how did you know, what is a credit score? They have no idea, I go, you've had five turndowns in the last three days. You've been to five other dealers, can't get your finance because you have big, they don't understand credit score or any, like Ally was just saying. And it's not just kids out of high school, I'm talking 40s, 50s, 60-year-old people. So it's a much, much needed course, I think.
When you have adults say, what do you mean, I have no money in my checking account, I still have checks.
That's an old, old adage. Anyone else? I have a motion and a second, if there's no further discussion.
Can you tell me who did the motion in the second, please?
What, Michelle?
Did the motion in the second?
Dan motion, Fred seconded. All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you, and Dr. Jones, thank you very much.
Thank you. The next thing along the lines of the program of studies, this is just a teaser for a later presentation on the official program of studies, but what we're looking at doing is, last year we put in Advanced Algebra with Financial Applications, and that course was designed to handle students that were leaving Algebra, Algebra I, but not quite ready for Algebra II. And so this was kind of a stopgap to get students up to Algebra II by senior year. And we're finding that the students that we have in that class, now we have some seniors, we have some juniors. So we have seniors that already have the Algebra II experience, and we have the juniors that aren't ready for Algebra II, so you're creating a disparity in the class that really is too large of a gap to cross. So what we're looking to do is branch off and create another Advanced Algebra with Financial Applications for juniors. So you'll see two listings in the program of studies, but there's, it's gonna be noted on the side that one's for juniors and one's for seniors. The one for juniors is gonna be a little heavier, Algebra II, getting them ready for Algebra II and prepping them for Algebra II, with the idea that they will still take that their senior year. The one for seniors will be more heavily towards the financial applications of algebra and math, and that's the kind of thing you see as far as financing, stuff like that. But just so you realize, that's what it's gonna be when you're looking at that for the program of studies, and that's something we're looking at as we review what's, what we're doing for the students as far as math and finance goes. The next one is a follow-up, or anybody have any questions about that, or no?
Anyone?
The next one's a follow-up, I believe there's a question asked about vaping earlier, and we all, we all talk about vaping and the issue that vaping, the issues that vaping causes. What we're doing now is we're looking at running another pilot for the second semester on a vaping diversion program. What we would like to do is, and we've received, we've gotten some resources, resources to do this. The, the thing is, vaping is an epidemic, we all know that, we all talk about it, but a lot of the reports are now coming out. We've had our counselors go to some different professional development opportunities. It's coming out now that it's such a problem, and because of the addiction aspect of it, that there have been two schools up north, I believe, their names escape me, that have actually changed their policies because doctors are prescribing nicotine patches, that students wear nicotine patches, because doctors are saying that's the only way that they can stop vaping. Obviously, when you're talking about nicotine patches in school, that's something that is quite foreign. So what we're looking at is not just the consequence, sure, there's still gotta be consequences for having vapes, vaping product, vaping on school grounds, or having paraphernalia. There's gotta be a consequence for that as a deterrent, and we've noticed some, we've noticed some improvement with that this past year, since we had moved it up to a suspension offense. Unfortunately, we noticed it go down a little bit, and now it's starting to pick up again. So that's not as effective as we'd like it to be. So we want to put in an educational component where a student gets caught with vaping paraphernalia, or vaping, and not just is there a consequence, and it wouldn't be as severe as the one we have now, but there's an education component. And looking at Belmont, who has done a successful vaping diversion program, and looking at some resources through Edgenuity, an online component, we're looking at the ability to take a student who gets caught with this, put them in a Saturday school, so to speak, for a couple hours, maybe for a couple Saturdays, where they have to go through a four- or five-step process that involves them watching informational videos, filling out different reports and forms, meeting with different individuals like the school resource officer, the nurse, and adjustment counselor, the assistant principal, or myself, to discuss the issues that they have in, in an effort to educate them, rather than just give them consequences and damage academically. But that's, that's a pilot we're looking to run in the spring, that I can give you more information on as we begin to run it. It will be, I don't like the idea of optional, the student comes in and gets caught, and you say, you can be suspended or you can do this, because quite often the students are gonna say, I'll take the suspension, thanks. So we've got, we've got some groundwork to do with parents and so forth, where we can take these students and move them into an educational component and see what we look at for repetition of the offense. We know that some schools have done some different things, that they're noticing their numbers aren't going down, but they're having less repeat offenders. So we want to look at being able to do it that way.
But you're gonna be bringing us a report about this and asking?
Absolutely, I'll, I'll be bringing you information as we do it, as it unfolds, and I'll definitely be giving you information at the end of the school year as to how effective it was, because if it is effective, to let you know everything I'm doing and be transparent, I'll move more towards an educational piece, if it's effective with students and getting students to stop vaping, because it's not always about the consequence, sometimes they just need to be educated on it.
Dawn, Ally.
You can go first, Dawn, it's mine.
Dawn.
In regards to educational support on this, it's interesting because back, just to get back to my, going to the conference and that Student Advisory Council, one of the reps actually spoke to this issue, and she said, you know, you would like us, or students to stop vaping, so you just put posters around the wall and hope that we'll read the poster and stop vaping. She said, we, we asked other students, how can we help you? You know, we want to talk about this amongst ourselves, like peer support. So you mentioned the Saturday program, I, I would hope that's not isolating, of course, you know, one student in a room, and here you sit by yourself and watch a video, and why it's no. So I'm just sort of opening the dialogue that maybe, you know, getting students involved in how we can support them.
That could definitely be part of it, and for financial reasons, we would probably have, we would probably have a larger Saturday-type detention coverage thing where some students would be there for detention, and others could be off to the side, doing some of this, so it wouldn't be exclusionary.
Ally.
I, I think education is really key to it, a lot of people think it's much less, like, it's almost better for them than smoking a cigarette, it's the same thing, it's just as harmful, if not more. And, and I think it's just a bit, that educational part of it, showing them that it is just as harmful and what it can actually do to the body, I mean, lungs look absolutely disgusting when you're a smoker, it's, it's horrible. And I think if you showed them pictures of that, that alone would just.
In speaking to some students, quite often, and unfortunately, a lot of them don't realize that they are addicted.
Yeah.
You know, the idea that you can't go six hours without having a vape means you're probably addicted. But they don't realize that, and then when you talk to them, as you ask them different questions about it, they start to, you start to notice the change in the look on their face, and they start to say, hmm, well, yeah, maybe, maybe there is something wrong. So if we can get more of that education piece.
If I can add just two, it came out today, but there, over the next two years, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is gonna come up with an anti-vaping curriculum for grades three to 12. Town of Ashland just received a grant today for $50,000 in order to, to try to help the commissioner and Desi put this together. So that, that is coming all the way down to the third grade.
Ally.
I'm curious to know, when a student is caught with vaping paraphernalia, do you guys look at the cartridge to see whether or not it's nicotine or?
Yes.
Pot, yeah?
That, that has to do with, that has to do with the consequence, the number of offenses they've had, what the, what the actual material is, whether it's THC or nicotine, we, we look at all that, and that, that rolls into what the current consequence is.
Dan?
I don't know who this belongs to, whether it's a deterrent, educational, it's on a Saturday, contractually wise, what's the outcome gonna be?
So what we'll do is we'll work with the association, and it'll be a new, a new position, so to speak, not, it's, it's an hourly thing. We have teachers that do detention after school, they do extended detention for, per hour, or an hourly rate, we'll work with the association. It's the Saturday detention, you, you folks at the committee brought that in for me four years ago, we've never used it. I talked to Chris about it, and I said, this might be a really good opportunity to have some education instead of a punitive breakfast club. You know, it's, it's something there, you know what I mean? So I think it's a, it's a good idea that we're using it, and it's, it's gonna be for minor infractions, and it's gonna be for, for this. And we've been saying for years that the vape stuff is not good, it's not good. And kids pooh-poohed it, and some parents pooh-poohed it, and now it's coming out that it's really not good. And walking into the bathroom with bubble gum, you could just smell bubble gum and things like that, and now more students have the THC, more students have, then you find that there's nicotine in everything. So it's really not good, and it's very hard for administrators to find kids doing it, because it's so small. I use the term, when I used to walk into a bathroom and somebody was smoking a cigarette, there's nowhere for that to go, and the smoke is there. The vape disintegrates, and the vape cartridge goes, you name it, goes anywhere, so it's challenging. So we want to get some education out there, I think the Commonwealth has done a nice job. I think shutting it down was a, was a real wake-up for a lot of folks, that this is not a, this is a health hazard right now. But we want to make sure that, you know, as we went from cigarette smoking to secondhand smoke, you have vaping to secondhand vaping, and that's where it affects quite a few of our students who walk into a bathroom and say, I don't want to be in that bathroom. And that's not just at the high school, so we're working with the high school, and we will be working with both middle schools. Haven't heard it much in the elementaries yet, I might put it with a yet, but I'm sure it's out there. So I think what Dr. Jones is doing, piloting this, is, is a very good thing.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Sean, you have?
This is certainly an important issue for me and for the community. I think it's a whole lot more important, or a lot more serious than we're actually discussing. I think addiction is a disability, and I think it should be treated as a disability. I did bring this up a couple months ago, and I think it should be recognized in the, in the student handbook as a disability. So that if someone wants to get into trouble, in a sense, for vaping, there'd be some sort of process where, almost like the, with the special, like a manifestation determination meeting, if someone's repeatedly caught with vaping, there should be some sort of screening to see if they have a substance use disorder. And if they do have a substance use disorder, it should be, I believe it should be treated just like a, an emotional disability. So it's not so much punitive or just Saturday school, I mean, Saturday school is helpful in a sense that there's an education component, but if somebody has a disability, then it's, there's a whole lot more that needs to take place. So whatever needs to, whatever needs to happen for that to move more in that direction, I think we should support that. But I think in the future, even in the next couple months, I think there should be advocacy groups that really stand up for this pretty strongly, because if things dip down, like you said, and now they're starting to come back more significantly, I think for kids to get in trouble because they have a disability is walking on some shaky ground that I'm not comfortable with, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. Okay, any questions for the superintendent? Moving on to the next issue, Regional Agreement Amendment Committee and Assessment Method. We met on the fourth, we met, there was a couple from each board of selectmen, there was Chris and myself were there, the couple town administrators were, were there. And there was a very lively discussion about the assessment method versus the alternative method, and what fell to what, whether it was statutory, all different names were brought up, talked about 60/40 splits, talked about, I think a lot of stuff got out, talked about the school district tightening their belt, that was one of the suggestions. There was a lot of, lot of different stuff going on in the meeting, but it was all very valuable information to try and get everybody sort of on the same page and working at it. There were no votes taken because the committee in the beginning thought maybe we should organize an elected chair and a vice chair and, and get this going. And we brought up what was the white elephant, so to speak, in the room, meaning the assessment. Let's get to the assessment, and by the end of the meeting, I think everyone was in agreement, they'd asked the school committee if we could vote to temporarily disband the new regional agreement committee until such time the times are ready to work, the towns are ready to work on amending all aspects of the regional agreement committee. Meaning, what they didn't want to do is violate any laws by having quorums and discussions that they could be having with each other. So that was kind of how the meeting ended, and they'd like to disband it for a few months to give them the opportunity to have some discussions, and then see where we're going to go with the whole agreement itself, and we can retake a vote and reassess the committee. George, you were there, you were there, is that a fair assessment of what went on, Chris, you were there?
Yep, yep, no, I just thought it was a, it was a pretty positive dialogue. And initially, you know, we talked about how we were going to take a vote, but we kind of pumped the brakes, so to speak, to give the towns a chance to have some input. And they subsequently asked if we could take a vote at this meeting just to kind of get us on the course for this coming budget, and then they would enter into negotiations on their own, really.
So I would entertain a motion to disband the new regional agreement committee until such times the towns are ready to work on amending all aspects of the regional agreement with the school committee.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion.
I have a question, when you say the members of these committee didn't want to be having questions as part of a quorum, so they wanted to be able to have discussions otherwise, is that just among themselves, or?
The towns want to be able to have the ability to work on it themselves.
They wanted smaller groups.
Right.
Independent working groups?
Yes.
Okay.
Basically, sub-sub-subcommittees.
Okay.
Anyone else?
I just feel like this, delay tactics is what I feel like this is all around, is that something needs to be done. We can't get to the point where we don't have a budget, and then the district is just upper creek.
That's why they asked us to take a vote in the assessment method for this coming.
That's good, and that's coming next.
So it forces their hands, they have to, they have to react to what we do.
Exactly.
After we vote the assessment method, can we then re-vote, how do we re-establish the regional agreement?
We can re-establish it at any, any up and coming meetings.
One of the things, once this committee establishes, if, if you determine a method of assessment, that's the method that we will put our budget together, this committee then will vote a budget to send to the communities. And that will be, that will determine how the communities vote, they'll get it. But this committee can vote the assessment methodology, and then this committee then votes to send the budget to the communities. So after we present in February, after we end up doing everything that we do, in March, you vote and take a vote to send the budgets to both the towns of Whitman and Hanson, determining which numbers they are responsible for, for the FY '21 budget.
Does everyone understand that?
I think it also should be noted, though, there was an active discussion about taking the vote and using the statutory method, because we know that that's where the end game is gonna be, at least for the initial. game is gonna be, at least for the initial, this year. So then, with the hopes that the recon, that they would reconvene to look at funding methods and everything else in a new regional agreement, that may or may not end up as a statutory vote yearly. Could be an agreement method worked out, could be the statutory yearly. That seemed to be the crux.
That was.
That was the crux of what seemed to be the conversation.
Mike?
Two-thirds vote, a majority vote, or?
Majority vote.
So, so for the assessment methodology, it's a majority vote of the committee. To send the budget to the communities, it's a two-thirds vote of the committee.
When we get to the budget. So tonight's vote would be not a two-thirds vote, it would be a majority vote.
When we get to the assessment. But right now, we're still voting on disbanding the regional agreement committee.
Right, I, I'm, we're getting to that, we're just explaining all of the above. So, I have a motion in a second, to disband the regional agreement. Michelle, do you have?
I got it.
You have it? Okay, is there any further, Chris?
So I guess I'm processing, right, like some others trying to keep up. But I guess I'm a little, I guess I'm pausing a little bit because we don't have any representation from the towns' votes, either of the select people that have attended other meetings in this conversation. So I guess that's, it's a part that just gives me a little pause, obviously I trust you guys, you were there at the meeting. But I think it actually kinda puts you guys in an unfair position to have to speak on behalf of them.
But, well, I can only say, though, that they specifically asked us to vote on this, both Hanson and Whitman, in an effort to kinda move forward, I think.
Both sides said it's a school committee issue, not their issue right now.
Right.
Because we have to make the decision of how.
Because it's a school committee vote, to send it to them.
Thanks for that, Chris, I appreciate that.
Mr. Boyce?
No, I think pretty much that what Chris and Dan was saying.
Okay.
Chairman.
Don?
I think my question would be, do we need to disband this regional amendment committee in order to vote an assessment method?
No.
No, but we should.
It's two different, two completely different things.
We'll finish this business first.
Correct.
They asked, we do this first, and then we're gonna move to, that's next.
I think my concern, to be honest, is if we disband this regional agreement committee, as they said, it allows them to have sub-sub-subgroups and have conversations among themselves. I would like to see conversations be open to all, to see if we could keep this committee together. We know at some point we're going to want to review the regional agreement, so that's where I'm coming from.
So, Bob, just clarify, and, and maybe it's words, but, so, so I'm just asking clarification, are we disbanding the subcommittee or suspending it? Because there's a big difference between disbanding and suspending it, so that's why I'm asking.
Disbanding, because they don't want to have to have.
Well, that's why I'm asking, did they ask to disband it, or did they ask to suspend?
They asked to disband, it wasn't, it wasn't a suspension.
Okay.
Because they wanna be able to talk without having a quorum and accidentally-
No, 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 I understand that.
Accidentally setting, in stone, something going forward. So it makes sense if they, they're trying to-
Yeah, Dan happened, Dan was-
Oh, no, no, that's okay, I'm just asking, suspension.
I, I can understand what they were trying to do, because all we're gonna have is this, and they gotta do that, they gotta do that in another room, has nothing to do with us. We're gonna set what methodology it is, and we, we build, build the towns, that's, that's how it works.
Okay.
Then we get back.
I guess ultimately, any agreement or discussion the two towns may have comes back to our committee as a regional agreement.
Yes.
Should be voted on, so.
Yeah, they'll just have to, we'll have to reopen the regional agreement committee again and add a minute, and they'll just bring that to the table, saying, this is what we've been thinking about, what do you guys all wanna do with this?
And we review it.
Okay.
I mean, it is a, it is a multi-town, multi, with the school eventually, but.
I think I missed something before someone did and said it again, I was like, it clicked, I was like, oh, now I get it, I missed something before.
Any other questions for the committee, I have a motion in a second? Kevin, do you wanna talk about this?
Yeah, I could, if I-
Go ahead.
So just clarification, and, and I, I think some of what I had was clarified. So with this move to disband, what did the committee talk about as far as next steps? Just to clarify that, was it going to be individual committees and then reporting back, or it was just, okay, we're gonna take care of the assessment method, get the, the budget set, and then kind of, you know, figure out down the, the road what we're gonna do there? Is that accurate?
Can I speak to that? So Kevin, what, what the committee asked, or members of that committee asked the school committee to determine a method of assessment.
Okay.
We're gonna do that.
Then, then we would provide them a budget.
Okay.
Based on that assessment.
I got you.
And I think then they would figure out, as Dan said, how they're gonna fund that.
Okay.
So, you know, I think as that comes up, that, that was where they were at, they were really asking the committee, at one point, like I, I said, you know, we're just gonna put forth a budget, we'll put forth two methods, the towns have to vote on those meth, you know, those, those numbers anyway. So I think what they wanted, this committee was to say, where, where are you at, and then we'll go from there.
Okay. Because we are, if I could just, to, a quick point, we are up against a timeline, though, right? I know typically our, our budget process, the concern, obviously, as this gets later and later, and I understand, you know, whether there's a, you know, amended agreement, a new agreement, whatever the case is, obviously, as we get closer to the July first, and we look at what possibly the commissioner could do, the impact that, that would have, because obviously there's rumors circulating about deregionalization, and, you know, this plan, and we're gonna go to the one-twelfth budget, what would obviously be the tremendous impact, not only on students, but also staff. So if this was one thing that, okay, you know, we're gonna try to do this, but, you know, down the road, down the road, another committee, another committee, and then we realize, holy cow, we, we have a huge crisis, both with our students and staff, that's obviously a, a huge concern, and I, I know that you share that too, but I certainly wanna make sure that we're aware of that, certainly with the towns. It's, I would say that'd be tremendous.
I believe, Kevin, we're a hundred percent aware of all of the above, and we're getting to a situation where I don't think anyone in this room wants the commissioner to take over and, and do with that, so this is what we're trying to-
Yeah.
-speed the process up, instead of bogging it down with more committee work.
Right.
And we did discuss that specifically at the meeting, and more of the desire to start with establishing a methodology and moving forward.
Exactly.
And I believe the notes will say that it was basically, do, let's get to something this year, and then from there, come back to say, how does the whole plan look, from a language perspective, from a process perspective, from a building perspective, and then, over the course of three to five years, or what have you, where does it end up? Does it go back to an amended agreement, based on the things that are worked out, that the committee works out, or does it go to the statutory only thing? That's where they sort of left it at. Let's take a vote for this year, let's move forward with this year, let's reconvene, take a look at everything, which would also include then funding, agreement terminology, whether it's agreement or statutory, for a certain number of years to come.
All right, and, and just one last point, if, if I could. So if we do go to the, you know, the, for lack of a better word, commissioner take over in the one-twelfth budget, that'd essentially be about a million dollars roughly short, right?
Potentially.
Okay, has, has there been, and I, I know it's premature, but at least wanted out there, has there been a discussion surrounding, like, numbers, programs, you know, that type of thing?
No, we're cautiously optimistic.
All right.
I don't wanna go down that hole yet.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Does everybody understand what the motion is? It's not to suspend, it is to disband. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay, unanimous, thank you. Next up is to determine an assessment methodology for the FY twenty-two-one budget. I think everybody is, in this committee, is fully aware of the assessment methodology. We talked about statutory, we've talked about alternative. I think everybody in the committee is fully aware that we have to take a vote, because ninety-nine point nine percent of it, a hundred percent of it, falls into the statutory category if you don't. So we need to take a vote and entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to utilize the statutory method for the FY twenty-one budget.
Second.
Yeah, what he said.
Pardon me?
Steve got it.
You okay?
Yes.
Okay, discussion, I have a motion, and I don't know who seconded it, because I was visiting. Steve, Mr. Boyce, okay. Discussion, Mike?
Yeah, I do, just for transparency, we're now voting tonight to keep, or also, we're voting tonight to either keep it the way it's always been, or we're voting this new method from the state called statutory. What is the other method called that we could-
Alternative.
Alternative method.
The agreement method.
Is it agreement or?
Which is, which is an alternative method.
Right.
It's called the-
What is the agreement?
The agreement method is alternative.
Correct. There are two methods that, that are on the table. A statutory method, which takes in a minimum local contribution, and a couple of other factors, and that's where you start of your, you start your assessment, or the agreement method, which is strictly a per pupil assessment.
So for transparency, we, we've always done it the way it is now, which is-
The agreement method.
The agreement method. Now, there's a new rule, this new thing from the state is called statutory.
Well, I'll clarify, we have done the agreement method, but the statutory method's not necessarily new, it started-
Lot newer than our agreement.
New to us.
Yeah, new to you, right, it's, it came out in ninety-three. And they started, they, there was a statutory, they started using local, minimum local contribution. So yes, we haven't used that methodology, at least in, in my tenure here as a principal and as a superintendent, we've used the agreement method sixty, forty, or really fifty-nine, one, whatever, whatever it was, it was a strict per pupil split.
Chris? Just staying on that topic, Jeff, so the statutory is exactly as you described it, the alternative is anything other than that.
Correct.
Which could mirror what's in our agreement.
Absolutely.
Which could mirror-
Something different.
We're gonna do the statutory and phase it in over time.
Correct.
Could be a whole host, but it's basically anything other-
Yes.
Correct. And those are both acceptable.
And they're both-
Correct.
allowable under law.
Correct.
Fred?
And just to go back, the statutory method is actually older than the agreement method. The statutory method was part of Ed reform of ninety-three. There was no other alternative or agreement method that could be utilized back then, and I believe it was ninety-seven that the Commonwealth allowed for an alternative method.
Our agreement was from-
Our agreement's from nineteen ninety-one.
I know, but when we, in nineteen ninety-three, with Ed reform, the only way you could do a budget was statutory.
So when she came, when we had the woman from the state come in, she said, what we're doing is one-hundred percent legal, buying the way we're doing it.
What we were doing, what we did, what we've been submitting recently.
She didn't say that.
We asked the court-
Not in that meeting, you didn't ask that.
A hundred percent positive, the statutory-
Well, none of us were at the table in nineteen ninety-three, so it's irrelevant.
No, I'm just saying, that, that was-
It's irrelevant.
But that was the method that was chosen by the Commonwealth and Mass.
We know how it was made up for all of us.
Any further discussion before we move to the vote?
Well, that part, I'll agree with you.
Chairman.
Don?
I'd like to clarify the vote, too. We're voting for statutory, but if it doesn't pass with majority, the default is not that we go to alternative, because that requires its own vote, as well, is my understanding.
Yeah.
In order to use the agreement method, requires another vote, and that would be unanimous of ten committee members.
Majority, majority is- So I'll, I'll back it up a little bit. So tonight, if you deter, there's two methods that are on the table, statutory or the agreement method. That's a majority vote of this committee, okay?
Right now, just to clarify, there's only one motion, it's to move to statutory. As of right now, I only have a motion in a second for statutory.
But as far as, that's a majority vote. To send a budget, whatever method is determined here, requires a two-thirds majority, majority of this committee. Once it gets to the communities, the agreement method needs a major, needs both communities to support that. The statutory method, because it's, there's only two communities, needs that, both budgets to, if Hanson approves one and Whitman appro, doesn't approve one, you still don't have, we don't have a budget. That then goes back to the school committee to determine numbers, methodologies, whatever, and that would come back to the town to vote on the two budgets. If they don't have agreement in there, it then goes to a tent meeting, super town meeting, whatever you wanna call it, and the only method that can be used in that tent meeting is the statutory method. Outside of whatever this committee votes, that super town meeting uses the statutory method. And if no agreement or no budget is formed out of that, and the commissioner takes over, the only method he uses to determine the fiscal twenty-one budget is statutory. So tonight, the school committee by majority can vote an assessment method, then whatever method we determine, we move the budget forward, and that's a two-thirds majority to the communities. And because we're only a two-member town, no matter what they vote, yea or nay, the budget goes forward, whatever, whatever. But if we don't have a budget from Whitman or from Hanson, and we come back, back and forth, bottom line is at a super town meeting, it's the statutory method that's used, and also, the commissioner's budget that he would give us at one-twelfth is based on the statutory method. But what the, what the town had asked us to do, asked the committee to do, is just vote on a method so they could understand the numbers that they're looking at.
Yep.
And the numbers for the statutory, for, to start a statutory method won't come out to us until the middle to end of January, based upon DOR.
Does everybody understand? Are there any further questions, Don?
I just wanted to comment, as Mr. Small mentioned, the statutory method began in nineteen ninety-three as a result of education reform. The reason why is it relates to chapter seventy, and that's when the state began dispersing chapter seventy, based on communities' wealth, and based on income levels, its personal income tax returns of the residents of each town. I know that as a committee, you know, I've sat in the audience for five years running, and it's never been discussed at this committee, but that doesn't mean it didn't exist, and it existed for a reason. It existed to support communities of varying wealth, and I'm not going to debate, you know, how much wealthier one community is than the other. But our own neighbors, right over in Bridgewater, Rainham, they debated this back in two thousand and nine, so out there as an option, we just didn't know about it, in Whitman, Hanson. It, it was implemented, really, to benefit all the children, to, you know, be equitable. And as a committee, I hope we'll recognize, our charge is student achievement, it's continuous student achievement, and we need to talk about how the availability of the statutory method does help our budget, it does help the students. I see it as an opportunity for both towns to rise up and really fund the needs of the Every year, we've gone on with level funding or budget cuts, and our students just don't get that extra chance at learning. So every year matters, and every dollar matters, that we don't spend on education, it ends up costing us more. By not providing these funds from both towns, we're narrowing what we offer. Students are gonna go elsewhere, and it's gonna cost us more. If we don't offer the teachers and the class sizes we need, then it's not gonna provide the solid foundation for students. As they get up to middle school and high school, they need more support. I know we can do better, I know it starts in the value of our programs and how we fund education. I just see this as the way the state recognizes it, and the way they want us to fund the budget. It's, it's why it is the default method.
Mr. Boyce, go ahead.
She's absolutely right. And I attended the Don Byers School of Learning this, and all my years and twenty years in town government, that's absolutely what it is, it's, you all wanna succeed, and this is how success is found, because we've all succeeded, and we wanna see those kids. I was mentioning to, I know Nurse Durant was at our meeting, and she was also at the discussion on the fourth, and I volunteered twelve years with Jane Durant at, at the Indian Head School. And for me, it's like, Jane, I see these kids, Andrew Clifford, he and I, he's come up to the JFK Library, visited, Liz Short, you might know some of the names, you might not, I mean, and I'm just picking a few out of the hat. They're doing the things we wanted that, for that success, and they did it not just based on, they don't even know what the assessment was, what, what method it was. We did it because we worked really hard to get them to those points. I think, Jamie Madden, I know the Madden name is very big in, in Hanson, in fact, Jamie was in the classroom I was volunteering in, the unfortunate year that her mom passed away while she was at cheerleader camp down in Florida, and I would probably never have mentioned that in public, but my heart went out to that family so much. She's getting married, she's buying a house, that's what we wanted to see. And, and, and Don's- And, and, and Dawn's absolutely right.
Thank you. Mr. Howard.
So just a couple of things, um, because I think we've debated, debated this healthily for some time now. So one, I think, I disagree that I've heard from anyone, including Christine Lynch, that the state, that the statutory method is the state's preferred method. What I heard clearly was, you can use whatever method you want, the law provides for that, that's how it's been. And if the state wanted it to be the only method, then they would have written into the law that it is the only method, right? So again, there's a debate there. I think the point I really want to clarify is, the assessment methodology does not solve our budget challenges. So whether we pick the statutory method, or the alternative method, or whatever method, I agree with exactly what Dawn said. Hundred percent support, we need to step up and do what's right for the kids of the district. However, I do need to clarify that whatever methodology we, we choose, there's still a budget that will delineate exactly what programs and services we need for our kids. The assessment is not gonna change that process. We still need to look at the budget. So I just, I want to make sure there's clarity for folks that are watching, listening, attending, that if we choose one method or not, at the end of the day, it still comes down to our budget. And what's in the budget and what isn't. The assessment is just how we're charging the respective towns the cost.
I think I agree with everything everybody at this table has said as far as, we want students to succeed. And I agree, the state has different theories on it. If the state was five thousand percent all-in, they'd fund unfunded mandates to the two hundred and forty-five million dollars, and this district could have tons of money. So we could argue all of those points for a long time going and be here all night. Does anyone have anything new or different before we move to the motion that I have on the table?
Move to vote. We talked about this for four or five sessions already.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, move to vote.
Anything different? Okay. If you vote in the affirmative, all those in favor of the statutory method, excuse me, as being the methodology used by this committee, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six. All those opposed? Four, six, four. So the statutory method passes, because it's strictly a majority.
Correct.
Okay. Budget discussions for, projections for F Y, excuse me.
So I appreciate the committee moving forward with a, a method. I, I agree with the discussion here, that it doesn't matter what method we use right now, we still have budget issues, and I, I appreciate that quite a bit. At our last meeting, Ms. Kemet asked for some information for the town of Hanson, Mr. Lyndham asked for some information for the town of Whitman. We've complied with both, and I've sent information back and forth. Mr. La Montana, the chair of the Whitman override committee, also asked for some budget projections. And what I wanted to share with this committee and with people at home are, these are just projections right now. We will give a full budget presentation in February, invite this committee to, I was invited, we were invited to the Whitman FinCom on January seventh, seven P M. I will share this with Whitman FinCom, and I, I want folks to bear with us. John just came on board last week. The majority of, of Georgias in my time since August has been working on the assessment, and what's right, what's not right. Giving both communities numbers that took a lot of time. Numbers on what it costs to educate a kid in Whitman, what it costs in special education, what our transportation costs are. And I think we've provided that to them. I'm struggling today a little bit, because members of both communities have talked about an audit. And they've talked about an audit, uh, excuse me, the selectmen have talked about an audit to determine what it costs to educate a student in Whitman, and what it educates to educate a student in Hanson. And since I've been here, we've just educated students in Whitman, Hanson. So I struggle with that. And I also struggle, because in transparency, people from DESI have contacted me about folks from the communities asking about things. Lawyers calling on behalf of communities for numbers. And my association executive director told me, or emailed me today and said that both boards of selectmen are looking, or he was approached today, or yesterday with a, a, for information on auditing firms. Because both boards of selectmen have voted to fund an in-depth audit of the school budget to ensure that the communities and state funds are being spent in the most fiscally responsible manner. Been superintendent for a year and a half, and we worked really hard last year to do the best for kids. So if you want to do an audit of what we do, bring it forth. If you want to do an audit because we think you're doing something wrong, bring it forth. But to question the integrity of both George and I, and this committee who put forth a budget last year that cut one point eight million dollars, I'm offended by that. And I have to say that to you folks. I think I have your trust, I trust you all, and I trust the members of the selectmen. I'm upfront with when we speak. I don't hold anything back. And to do an audit, to spend thirty to forty to fifty thousand dollars on an audit, when that would supply me with Chromebooks for the high school, challenges me. When I'm proposing a budget that I cut teachers with last year, that I cut a technology director with last year, that we cut eight hundred and ninety thousand dollars worth of positions to say we're not fiscally responsible. We're seventeenth from the bottom in per pupil expenditures. We're better than we were. We spent twelve-seven. That's the last update that I got from DESI. That's not great. We're providing the best possible education we can, and I will work with the boards of selectmen and town administrators to give them whatever information we have. But to say we're not fiscally responsible, that just rubbed me the wrong way today, and I wanted to share that with you. And we're gonna present a budget that I think is fiscally responsible, that also is gonna show the needs of what we need for this district. This committee, every member of this committee has asked me for different things about where we want to be. I have parents saying, where, where can we go? How can you address certain situations? We've always cut, and I always said, look, we're, we're, we're starting at level, we're starting at level service, and we go from there. Last year, we didn't even start at level service. The town of Whitman asked me for a six percent below level funded at, at the beginning, and we ended up with a three and a half percent, give or take, increase in our budget, which I thought was fair, but we still had to cut. So tonight's piece is really just a summary of where we are, what we might want to be, and we've, we've changed some, some, some language a little bit, thanks to Mr. Tuffy. So in your packet today, you have the summary of operating budget increases. So you'll see the F Y twenty budget, we certified at fifty-two, four, twenty-five, seven, thirty-eight, okay? Our preliminary budget for F Y twenty-one, and nobody dropped their mouth or whatever, we're looking at fifty-seven, four, ninety-two, nine, thirty-eight, or an increase of nine point six-six percent. Five million, six, sixty-seven thousand, two hundred. And that's giving you what we need to move us forward. That's full day K, that's a change in school start time, that's things that we've talked about for years and years, and you say, what are the numbers, and we can't do it. But I put it here. This is prelim, again, this is in our formal budget presentation. I don't have lines and graphs, and, and we'll make that all pretty for you, and I'll explain to you why we need that. Page two is our increases. We label them as required, restore. Our required expenses total twenty, twenty-two, ninety-one, two hundred. This is a salary increase of two point five percent for everyone in the, in the district. That's our unit A, that's our unit B, that's our unit C, that's our unit D, and that's non-union employees, contracted folks. So we're up thirteen hundred fifty-two, two hundred by contract for F Y twenty-one already.
Jeff, can I just stop you for one second?
Sure, I'm sorry.
Some of the people watching may not understand what unit A, unit B, unit C.
Absolutely.
Can we just say it's all of the employees across the board?
Everybody that gets.
In the district to make the district open and close the doors every day.
Correct.
Including maintenance, plowing.
It's everybody.
Everybody.
It's my salary, it's parent's salary, it's teacher's salary, it's everybody.
All salaries.
What's that?
All my employees' total.
I'd have to get that number if you're here.
Okay.
Okay.
You know, and that, again, that's for our formal presentation.
Yeah, no, 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 I know.
But, and these are, these are estimates as we go forward. Our, our, our contributions to P C A, and this is just up this year, this is, this is level funded and up. P C A pension is up one oh seven, a hundred and seven thousand. Health insurance is looking at four, uh, four percent increase, and last year that was up and down, but a two hundred thousand dollar increase. Our, our bus contract is up forty-two thousand, our custodial contract is up twenty-nine, gas and electric is up eighty-three thousand, that's for six buildings, water is thirty thousand, trash is eight. Uh, special education, transportation, we're over already, so we're looking for a two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar increase. However, in the new, new student success budget, student achievement budget, they've earmarked a twenty-five percent reimbursement, subject to appropriation. But I'm looking at that as possibly coming back. Uh, specialized tuition is up one-ten. Uh, facilities, we have more and more of our guys getting certified to do more and more for us, which makes us more fiscally responsible. But when they get a certification, we expect to compensate them for that certification. And our E L L services have increased, we are now at what?
We're at seventy-two.
Seventy-two.
We're at seventy-two students who are, we're at seventy-two students who are E L L. This would.
We're seventy-nine, we had eight students who were.
Seventy-nine right now. If we get to a hundred, we have to establish our own program, our own specific program with all the mandates, because you would no longer be low incident. But this would, um, we, we've never had supplies for E L L. We just take from another line. We've never, uh, translation services are now becoming very, very difficult with the amount of students we have, so those are things that have to be budgeted for. And it would be another point five E L L teacher, because we have students all over the district.
So, so we.
Ellie.
E L L, how many different languages? Just a random question, but.
Lauren can answer that.
Thirteen, she said.
Boy.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
George, I looked at the numbers through some of my research, and I think it was five to six years ago, we had, according to DESI report, five E L L students.
Yes.
Five.
That's.
So that's why my seventy-nine, I thought it was, I think in my head, fifty-five. I thought we jumped in five years from five to fifty-five.
Now we have seventy-nine.
We had point, a point four teacher at that point. We're up. So E L L, excuse me, what we're looking to is restore, so we did eliminate a position in technology last year, and we've come to realize that we need, we need something back, but maybe not that position. So we're looking at a specialist and a desk facilitator to make us more equitable, or more efficient. As I've mentioned, we, we purchased a math curriculum last year, because we didn't have one, K to five. We're piloting an E L L curriculum this year, because we don't have one. And that's a tune of a hundred forty-five thousand dollars, and then we need a diagnostic in middle school for our math program.
Yeah, if I could, I'd just like to mention the diagnostic program in math for middle school. We have the I Ready Complete Program for Elementary. This is just a diagnostic piece. Some of the things we're looking at, because their curriculum is end of life also, is a free curriculum out of, uh, that's gotten very good reviews on open source out of California. We've done some preliminary work with that, but this diagnostic, we'd take this three times a year, you'd give the diagnostic, it's a subscription fee online, but that would be able to give us a starting point, a midpoint, and an endpoint for all of our students in middle school.
So under-recommended, this is where we're at. Committee has asked us for what we want to restore or bring back, bring back program, bring back different things. We really need a robotics program, K to eight. That's where we're going, we need coding and robotics in, in elementary school and middle school, twenty-five thousand dollars. Folks have commented on the bright program in the high school, our transition program for students who come back from hospitalizations, as you know, I've commented on that. We're looking at adding one per middle school, so that students, when they transition out, have some place to transition into. Special education supplies, we don't do a lot of P D and S P E D, and our supply budget comes from a variety of places. We're looking for a forty thousand dollar increase in S P E D, uh, education supplies. And that really has come forth, because we have more students acting out, and we have to de-escalate those students. And adding training to our parent professionals to de-escalate our students is, is what we want to move forward to. Instead of having the student escalate, have them kick, have them punch, whatever, and then we end up into a, a, a situation where we're looking at a placement in our T L C program, or possibly an out-of-district. We've talked about full-day K, to bring full-day K back, about eight hundred thousand dollars, one-time expense, we'll get chapter seventy money from the following year, and we'll break that down as we go into February. Adjust, adjusting the school start times, again, one-time expensive, about four hundred and forty thousand dollars, with transportation reimbursement the following year. It'll, it'll cost us in F Y twenty-two about fifty-five out of the district budget, but this is a one-time startup cost to move everything in. George can speak to foreign language in the middle, we've cut and we've eliminated foreign language in the middle. We did it because we weren't equitable. We only had two teachers, one per school, and it, not every student had access to foreign language. The proposal here would give all students in middle school access.
This would be, this would make it, uh, this would make, I'm assuming it would be Spanish. This would make foreign language an academic subject for at least grade seven and eight in both Hanson and Whitman. In order to do that, though, you have to, to make it an academic subject, you have to change the schedule, and you'd have to supply at least as many teachers as teach every other subject. So if two, if you have two math teachers at eighth grade, you have to have two Spanish teachers at eighth grade. However, not every student can attain at that level of a foreign language due to their cognitive makeup. So you have to have something else for them, that's where a reading specialist comes in. So that's where you get into these numbers. When I got here in two thousand and three, I think it was the last year of French and Spanish, we did away with it, and then we brought it back. We brought it back in the, in a way that never really worked, that led to inequity. We had one teacher traveling to two schools, then we had one teacher each, then we only got it in seventh and eighth grade, depending on who you, who you were and the ramifications we had. So then we finally got rid of it from an equity standpoint. I am not comfortable, I will go with whatever takes place, but doing another Band-Aid. I think we should be in, or we should be out. Then that raises the question, that's ten teachers. If you were going to appropriate ten teachers, then what does that look like if you don't have a foreign language and you appropriate ten teachers? But again, those are recommendations that are just here, but we've talked about it a lot. The, the last one, the staffing for four teachers to reduce class size, comes from a lot of the cuts we made last year. Because we forget that we made a lot of cut, nineteen people didn't have a job. So of those, you would attack and you would try to reduce class size, especially at the younger grade levels, where there are, in some instances, twenty-eight is the new norm. That's what that would be.
So Indian Head grade four right now, where we made a cut, twenty-five, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-five. Grade four at Indian Head at Duval, I'm looking at grade one at twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-four, made a cut. Uh, grade two is twenty-six, twenty-six, uh, twenty-five, twenty-six, that's too much for, for Duval as well. And Connolly, grade four, or grade, Connolly, grade four, twenty-four, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-three. We tried to get everyone between nineteen and twenty-one, and those are, those were our cuts. So we went and asked every building to make cuts. We lost two teachers in the high school, we've lost two teachers in the middle school, or actually, two teachers in the middle school, one teacher at Whitman Middle School. Get my sheet for you, so I'm accurate. Lost a central office employee, we lost a facilities building use coordinator, we lost our technology director, we downsized our out-of-district coordinator, we lost six paraprofessionals, we lost a business teacher, a science teacher at the high school. We lost a second gr, uh, a, a teacher at Indian Head School, which ended up being in fourth grade, a duty aide at Indian Head. We lost a science teacher at Hanson Middle School, we lost a Spanish teacher at Hanson Middle School, we lost a Spanish teacher at Whitman Middle School, a duty aide at Duval, a teacher at Duval, a duty aide at Connolly, and a teacher at Connolly. And point four elementary music, we lost fifth grade band. That was the cuts from last year. As well as two hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars in costs that we had. We were lucky enough to get some insurance cost back, we cut our substitute line by twenty, we reduced our Chromebook initiative, we had a contract for fifty-three thousand dollars a year leased out with Chromebooks, we cut that. Cut out two thousand dollars in facilities, we took five thousand dollars in instructional supplies, I cut my superintendent's course, we cut ten thousand dollars of, of legal E L L supplies that I'm asking for, we cut ten grand out of, and we cut our student summer tech help. We also had fifty-two thousand dollars, we cut, uh, M T R S retirees. It was, it was, uh, we had budgeted, and then we could take that out. So the sum of two ninety-two, and I think we took five hundred plus out of E and D last year, and we're not gonna be able to do that this year. So when, when folks say we can tighten our belt, we'll tighten our belt as best we can. I think we, we, we are as fiscally responsible as we can, we've gone with, without. I had a good conversation with a, a selectman from Whitman about taxes and things. I don't vote in either community. I know that seventeenth from the bottom is not where I ever want to be. I know my community of Pembroke moved from five from the bottom to thirtieth from the bottom with an override a couple of years back. They spent fifteen, or, excuse me, thirteen-four right now, and that would, a, a small override like that would help us. I'm not saying override, I'm not advocating for any of that, I'm just saying, this is what the committee, parents, a parent has asked me to meet with her about school start time and rationale, and, 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 and. about school start time and rationale and case studies and research and this and that. And I know Dr. Whitner had brought up, I'm a supporter of changing school start time. I just don't have 400 and something thousand dollars to do that at this point. I'd rather put teachers back in the class. And that's where we're at right now. So again, preliminary, it's December 11th. Okay, we're going to present different things, and I'll validate why we need certain things. But this committee has always supported kids, and I ask them to continue to support kids. And I know you're responsible to your local communities as well. But you became a school committee person to advocate for kids, to support the superintendent and the teachers in this district. We have one hell of a group of teachers in this district. They work their tails off, and we don't give them a lot. So when we came to you about pro-content and curriculum, it's needed. We're Band-Aiding a lot of things. When George says, "I don't want to Band-Aid," we're in or we're out. And I'm tired of being out. So we're going to talk about this, we're going to talk about this. The assessment, to me, wasn't a big deal, because I'm going to give you a budget. How the towns fund the budget is something that we'll work together with. But the assessment thing, as much work we put into it, that's one avenue. Now it's the costs that are going to come up. And what I put is required, the teacher's contract. To prepare for this meeting, I asked myself to solicit contracts from all our local communities, and they've been rolling in. Guess where we are? We're smack right in the middle. That's where Whitman-Hanson is. But our teachers make a salary that's equitable to the communities that are local to us. If you look on the state records, we're a little higher than average. But then I look at the ages of my teachers and where they're at, I think we're more senior than we were junior. And when you cut junior staff members, guess what? Your salary average goes this way. So I think that's been our issue, is we've cut, cut, cut. So all our younger teachers that would balance us out to be right in the middle as far as mean salary is there. So again, preliminary budget information. I know we're probably going to get some phone calls tomorrow, like, "I can't believe you're going to go up 9%." And we're not going up 9%. But this committee has asked me, Mr. Lamontina and that committee said, "Put everything you think you need on this, so that we can bring it back to our override committee." And I'm sharing this, because the town of Hanson doesn't have an override committee, but so that the town of Hanson can hear this as well. And I'll share those, these numbers with the selectmen and their FinComs as they invite us to their meetings. And I'm available for whenever, so.
Ian?
Going all the way back to the beginning, when Jeff talked, I said, "I'll just wait." He's going to want to get everything out of here. I agree, you know, there was that regional agreement meeting, and one thing that stuck out really about my crowd, it wasn't the fact that they wanted to have audits. Audits are, you know, hey, it's your choice. But to turn around and tell you to tighten the school budget belt, is I remember, we're the only department that's cut, laid off, dropped services. I don't think we can be tightening the belt any more than we have. We swap our light bulbs when we can to make money. We do everything we can. That really, as a participant on the sidelines, really ticked me off as a, not only a school committee member, but as a person of the town of Women. It's, everything you're presenting here, you know, I'm on board, I'm a big SPED person. Unfortunately, that's, you know, a money monster. The full-day kindergarten thing, that's been a joke for 10 years, way before I was on here. These are all things that have already been established. You know, and people get confused when you're giving them an assessment. Assessment is not an increase in our school budget. It's, here's your bill, pay it. That's what we're charged with to come up with a budget. It's up to the towns to start figuring out how to better control maybe their funding, so we can support the schools. Because we all lost money back when they dropped us from like 70-something percent of the Chapter 70 down, and nothing was changed in the way the towns operated to readjust the biggest budget, losing its funding is one of the things. And I mean, people are going to complain that that's all we talk about. It's a fact of life. We lost a lot of money in the budget. Technically, the budget, if you went to, if you kept getting that Chapter 70 money, I think we would have like, what, a $72 million budget now?
Great.
You know, that's the way it was going. And to drop that down, but to have somebody tell us to tighten our belts up here? We lost people, we lost services. Kids aren't being educated correctly, as far as I can see since I've been on this board. And that's all I got to say. I agree with most of the stuff here. We know it's a long shot. Towns don't have the money. But they really got to start looking into ways of getting it, whether it's through legislation. Because like, you know, Bob and everybody, we all put up the same thing. If they ever funded the unfunded mandates, when we have a surplus up at the state of unexpected, you know, revenue coming in, and they just don't pay those bills, we wouldn't be in the hole, the towns wouldn't be in the hole. We'd have surplus, we'd be giving money back to the towns. You know, that's the sad part. We don't get paid, we have no other way of going after money, and we're supposed to tighten our belts. The towns have other ways of collecting revenue. We don't. You know, ours is controlled by legislation, and they really don't do their job well, because here we are without the budget, you know, they're still summarizing things from last year. It's ridiculous, and that really did tick me off. You know, not as much as the, let's go and do the books. Do the books all you want, the money's still...
I heard that comment, too.
Yeah, yeah. And that really, I'm surprised you two didn't turn around and... Because on the sideline, it was very, yeah. But being on the sideline, that was hard to hold back and not say, "What are you talking about?"
You know, if I can, it's hard not to take that personally. And that's why I said that to the committee today. I don't dislike anybody. I just want people to believe that we work really hard to be fiscally responsible and educate kids. And I think sometimes folks don't understand that there's a cost to educate kids. And not every, it's not always fair, and it's not always equitable. And we're caught between a rock and a hard place to give the best possible education to all of our students. Pre-K to 12.
And you're not going to please everybody. There's always going to be somebody saying something's wrong.
I've got everybody in the place wants to talk.
Yeah, go ahead.
You're on the list, Mr. Boyce. Mr. Small.
I'm very quick. Under the recommended, just to clarify from my mind, that's not in any particular order or priority.
Not at all. No, we just put them down, you know? And I think that's, as we move forward, we'll hear from folks to say, "What would your priority be?" So, again, very preliminary.
All set.
Yep.
Chris, excuse me.
So I thank you for putting this together. It's really good. I keep looking at our little placards with our mission statement to talk about the commitment to providing each student with a high-quality education that promotes student success and responsible citizenship. And I think when I look at the recommended, and I know what other towns around us offer, this is just competitive. This isn't a wish list of, hey, we want to be better than everyone else. This is just the table stakes to be competitive with everyone else. So I think, you know, I'm fully in support of this, and I think I would ask the towns that they really have to help us with this support, or we should be changing our mission statement to, we're just here to provide the lowest-cost education to every student in the district. Because that's what we've been doing, and if that's what we're going to do, then we might as well change our mission statement. Because this, again, I look here, and this is all basic stuff. Every other community around us has all of this. You're not asking to go above and beyond. Thank you for putting it together.
Thank you. Ellie, then Mr. Boyce.
I cannot apologize enough for those statements that were made, even though I didn't make them. That's disgusting to me. You do the absolute best that you can, and you have gone, both you and George have gone so above and beyond this year. You're being taken away from educating the children to work on all these numbers. And for the towns to come forth and question your ethics and how the budget is being spent and how everything is being run, that's absolutely disgusting. And for them to even question, and I said it at the last meeting, when they started questioning, they wanted to know how much it costs to educate a Hanson student versus Whitman. I even said it at that meeting. That has nothing to do with anything. We don't differentiate between Whitman or Hanson students. And I am disgusted that they're continuing on that, because at the end of the day, it doesn't freaking matter. You have to educate the kids. And I'm disgusted that they would, I'm sorry, I'm just absolutely disgusted that they would question that and insult you guys like that.
Thank you. Mr. Boyce?
Remember when I requested a copy of your review put in George's folder? That's how much I love this team. You two are awesome. And I totally agree with Ellie on what she's saying. And for those people that make those statements, they need an audit, they need this. Get on the bandwagon and get here a little goddamn sooner. Don't wait till the last minute to start your bitchin' and grippin'. Pardon my French.
Don, thank you everyone for your patience, by the way.
In regard, unfunded mandates, as Dan mentioned, I would agree. If we had those funds, it would be helpful. However, all our neighbors in our other regional school districts, they don't have the unfunded mandates either. So I just wanted to mention that they're all in the same boat. So it's not just Whitman-Hanson that has unfunded mandates. So when you look at us, 17th from the bottom, it's not just because we don't get those mandates funded. Those other schools that might be 50th from the bottom, 100th, out of 351 towns in Massachusetts, we are number 17 on the bottom. So that's, you know, 334, they've got unfunded mandates, too. So it goes back to our towns and how they choose to support education. So that was my comment. One question, and you can defer this to actual budget. When you mention full-day kindergarten, if that were to be implemented, would we have classroom space? Because now you've got half-day kids, and you'd need a full...
We'd have to make a few modifications, but we do have some space. We do have space. Now, that being projected, as the new developments go into the town of Whitman and the town of Hanson, we'd have to look at our space issues. We're looking at enrollment projections in the future, so, but yes, we do.
Anyone else from the committee? Sean, you have something new on?
This is terrible, actually. I feel like there's no, there is no solution to this issue right now. We're in a lose-lose situation, and I don't know that, well... I think what's been brought up tonight on a couple of situations is really the separation of where we need to be. Not the community coming closer together, it seems to be moving further apart. Was it all of Whitman that voted one way, and all of Hanson voted another way on the agreement? That's not a good sign.
This isn't relevant.
Well, I apologize, but I feel like...
Sean, what are you getting at? We're talking about budget.
People are not going to like what was, people who deal with money and who deal with the logistics of money and trying to create a sustainable budget are not going to be happy with what was said tonight. This is going to make things really tense over the next couple of months, and I'm concerned about that. I don't, there is, I know people were concerned about the audits and those sorts of things, but I think the ability to create a sustainable budget is a solution that is trying to be had. We're in a horrible situation for circumstances, not because anybody's at fault in this room, but I think mostly because the state's holding back funds. So we're going to be in a situation where we have lack of funds for a significant period of time, and that doesn't just affect the school. Because it's such a significant amount of money, it affects all other town departments. And until we reach that target share, which I think would be a good number to see on paper, like how long it would be, it's going to be the case that year after year, we're going to lack funds. So then how do you rectify the situation? Of course, I think we should have full-day K, and I think we should add those components, but is it realistic, given the current situation? And unfortunately, I feel like, it kills me to say it, how could it be? 9%? Is that what you said?
But does that mean you don't put it down? Because then is it a negligent situation by this committee and by us, if you don't put it down?
No, I appreciate you putting it together, but I think the ideal situation, I guess, would be is if people sat down, the leaders of this community sat down behind closed doors and came together with a solution that would work for everybody, so that people would start voting together. This is going to create separation among departments. This is going to create separation among Whitman and Hanson, and then it's just not leading in, and it's not leading down a good path. This is going to be a really difficult next couple of months. And where does it lead us to next year, you know? The philosophy here is not, let's come together and let's work things out. It's, let's dig our heels in and fight for what we believe in, despite what it means for you and your department or your town. And that's, if we go to war, the kids get hurt, you know? So be careful.
Ellie?
I'd just like to point out that, you know, you're saying every town department's been affected. Please name one town department that laid a single solitary person off last year. You can't.
Well, the year before, the year before that.
It's just the schools. So... Maybe it should affect other departments and not just the school. I think education is extremely important. Yeah, I'm all set.
Thank you.
And to write off that, the Massachusetts State Constitution, education is the only thing that's required. But yet, as a required department, we always have to take the hit. These other departments aren't required. They're needed, yes. It'd be foolish not to have public safety. But the one that is required seems to be the one taking the brunt every year. And like I said before, the towns had plenty of time to learn how to readjust that big, you know, drop in the budget. But the whole time, I've been here for 20-some odd years, never saw it go in that direction. It's not that we want to go against other departments. I'm sorry, I'm here for the children. That's why I was elected. I was elected to come in for this department, to educate these children. And since I've been up here, hasn't gone forward one inch, we've only gone backwards. And that has to stop. And if the towns were really serious, they'd come together, get their crap together. Unfortunately, I don't want to pay more taxes. That's the only way this is going to ever be revolved. And we have a 16% tax rate, and we're the lowest in the area, and we don't want to budget that up because we pay too much in taxes. We don't pay too much in taxes. We're just fiscally conservative, and we don't want to spend the money. Something has to give, and that's the only other way of raising money is through taxes. It's unrealistic for a lot of people to eat that, but, you know, we can sit here every year, we've been doing it for six years since I've been here, we're not going forward, we're going backwards. And it's the only one that's required by the state. So, you know, taking the hits is getting to be, like I said, that's kind of insulting to tell our superintendent, turn around and say, "The school system has to tighten the belt." Like Ellie was pointing out, nobody else is taking a hit. Actually, we hired more firefighters a couple of years ago in Whitman. So there was one department that increased its area, and it was needed. So why can't the school system continue to grow the way it has to, to meet our obligations to the children? I mean, that's all I got to say.
So just to quantify, I didn't bring a budget to start World War III. I was asked by Mr. Lamontina, and that, sitting on that board or on that committee, he asked, and the committee asked, to put forth things that we need, so that they could make decisions in Whitman. So that's what I did. And we just said, "If we didn't do that, we're going to lose. And if I bring it forth, I'm going to lose." So Mr. Kane's right, it's lose-lose. If I bring it forward, people get angry because we brought the truth forward. If we don't bring it forward, I have parents saying, "You weren't transparent with us of your true needs." So that's where we're at on December 11th. Again, this isn't the operating budget that I'm recommending to the district or for the taxpayers. In February, we'll lay things out. I think you'll see where we want to prioritize some areas. Maybe areas that, you know, full-day K, people have said that it could be a debt exclusion, it could be this, it could be that. We haven't even gone down that road yet. So this isn't the operating budget that I'm saying it's up 9%. It's where we were at. If we truly wanted to say, "Hey, look, people have, it's the holiday time people are giving, I want to put everything on the table." This is where, you know, hey, let's open it up. Sometimes I feel like a charity. We're all excited about the $10,000 grant. We get really fired up about that, that's great. But we have to look at how we educate all of our kids. And I appreciate Mr. Howard's statement, because I'm looking at mine right now, high quality. When I see my peers, and they have foreign language in the middle, and they have this and they have that, we still put out, we put out a great product. I think kids get a great education pre-K to 12. We could make it better, and they could then have different ideas of where they want to be. So again, I didn't want to open up a can of worms, but I was asked to for today. And I was asked to make that public. I would have come to you before January's meeting of FinCom for that. So remember in the past, we didn't do budget until February. Then George used to say it was the no-good spring, that's all we talked about. And we pushed it back last year to December, lucky me. And now we made that. So we're talking about it in December, and I think that's good. We're having a good dialogue. So that's what it is. And I just want people to marinate on that a little bit in the festivity of the holidays. And it's just where we're at. If we really want that high quality, we need some of these things. And it all doesn't have to be in one year. But I would like to have that town dialogue about where we want to be. And I think the override committee has been charged to do that. I was asked to do that, and I'm complying with what I was asked to do.
Chris?
I just thank you for putting this together, and I appreciate the, like, the format. And I, I think it's very, very important to have this communicated. Through all this talk of the assessment methodology and agreement, regional agreement and whatnot, I don't ever see the exchange of information being a problem. It's the tone, it's the rhetoric, it's the emotion that really get in the way. So, you know, I welcome this information. It, it tells a story, and it's an important one. And we should advocate for our district. So, you know, these are just, this is just data, and it shouldn't offend anybody. It, it, it tells us, you know, where we are, where, where we want to be. So I would just like to see us all and, you know, members of our community to try to work through this stuff without the, you know, inflamed rhetoric and, and, you know, nasty tones. Because I do believe we are one community. We are WH, you know? That, to me, is not, you know, I don't take that lightly, you know? I'm born here, raised here, raised my kids here. So, you know, I, I think it's important for us to communicate where we are, where we want to be. And, you know, it, it doesn't have to be, we don't have to hold back for fear of offending anybody if we approach it, you know, tactfully, that's all.
Thank you. Fred?
Just like to add, and I think it's a good thing of what we have here. And I think it's something that we need to advocate for, and we need to advocate to both towns. I understand Whitman has a budget override committee. Perhaps the town of Hanson would be more willing to try and put something together a little bit more, a little bit quicker. Because in order to get what we need, we are definitively looking at an override. The sustainability aspect, I think, is something that we have to concern ourselves with as well. And then also, let's not forget, okay, full-day K, for instance. What about an earmark? We worked very well with our legislators. If we could get an earmark and, you know, within conversation, both state representatives, Representative Kotler, Representative Sullivan, and Senator Brady have, you know, it's been brought up, and I believe that they would go to bat for us, so to speak. That could be a way of at least funding a first year. But we would also have to show them that we could sustain it. So maybe if we could get some sustainability numbers, I think it's the second week of January is something they can start putting in for earmarks. Keeping something like that in mind.
Okay. We've heard quite a bit about budget. I'm going to move on to it. I have a very short plea. I said at a selectmen's meeting when I heard about this audit, Jeff, to go back to your thing, and I got some heat for saying, well, why would you have an audit when we have an independent audit? Well, after hearing, and I was trying to save the town's money, but after hearing the word transparency been discussed 50 times, I'm all for the towns having an independent audit. Let's put it to bed. Let them hire their own auditing companies. Get it out on the table so everybody can see these numbers are real, and put it to bed once and for all. So I'm advocating now that they do it. I'm not offended by it. I wasn't offended by it then. I was on the save a little dollar money, but I'm okay with it. I, I, I think it's great, do it, because numbers don't lie. That I have learned in my career. Numbers don't lie. People may bend the truth, but the numbers are the numbers, and they don't lie. So having said that, any other questions for Jeff? We're going to move on. Thank you for putting those numbers together.
And I'll send that to the Whitman Override Committee, Mr. Lamontina. I just wanted to share that with you.
Thank you, Jeff.
And I know you were asked to put together a total budget of what you need, and that's how you came up with the numbers, because of discussion you and I had this, so. Yes, ma'am, then we're going to move on.
Thank you. I will be brief. I'm Kathleen O'Teener. I'm a member of the Whitman FinCom. And I moved to Whitman four years ago because my grandchildren all go to Whitman School System. They're not yet in the high school yet. And it was at the time of the override where parents were so engaged, and others, not just parents, trying to advocate for the schools. And I want to say this is the best meeting I've listened to since the override was defeated. You are the advocates for the schoolchildren. If you don't advocate for them, who will? So I appreciate the exchange of information. I look forward to getting the budget so I can advocate for the budget. And good luck to you on getting this funded, because these kids need this education.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. New business, field trips. Student Council is going on a field trip, March 4th, to Resort and Conference Center in Hyannis. This is an annual conference. We have approximately eight to 16 kids, two chaperones. They will not be needing school nurses, as emergency personnel are on hand. I entertain a motion to accept.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Yes, okay. We're at subcommittee. Before I move to that, I know this isn't on your agenda, but it's, it's in my packet. Whitman Henson Regional School Committee, dear Mr. Hayes, I would like to give you the dates for the known state elections that will take place during the upcoming school year of 2020, 2021, so the school committee could take into consideration not having school on these dates. State primary election, Tuesday, September 1st, 2020, the hours are 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. State presidential election, Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020, hours 7:00 to 8:00. It would be greatly appreciated if you and the committee could make this happen. Thank you very much, Elizabeth Sloan, Hanson Town Clerk. This is just giving you information. I'm not asking you to vote on it, or discuss it. I'm just letting you know we will be voting on it in another meeting. I did receive the letter, and I wanted to make it public. Okay, subcommittee reports. We're at subcommittee. I entertain a motion to approve the minutes of November 21st, 2019.
So move. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Any unanimous? Thank you very much. Facilities and capital improvement, excuse me, committee, I know they met tonight.
We met tonight, and I'm going to pass it over to.
So, so I have an announcement for the committee and for members of the public. I was invited to Boston today and met with the Board of Directors from the MSBA, and I have a letter that I like to read. Dear Superintendent Simonak, I am pleased to report that the Mass School Building Authority, the MSBA Board of Directors, voted to invite the Statement of Interest, the SOI for the Whitman Middle School, into the Whitman Hansen Regional School District into the MSBA eligibility period. The MSBA invitation is specific to the deficiencies identified by the district in the SOI for the Whitman Middle School. It includes the study of potential grade reconfiguration for the town of Whitman, student enrollment of grades five through eight only. The 270-day eligibility period formalizes and streamlines the beginnings of the MSBA grant approval process and benefits the district by providing a definitive deadline for the completion of preliminary requirements assisting with the determination of financial and community readiness and identifying needs for planning and budgeting. Successful completion of all activities in the eligibility period will allow the district to be eligible for the MSBA invitation to feasibility. So it's two different things. Invitation into the eligibility period is not an invitation to the feasibility study. Moving forward in the MSBA process requires collaboration with the MSBA, and an invitation to feasibility study will require further vote of the MSBA Board of Directors. Communities that get ahead of the MSBA without, without MSBA approval will not be eligible for grant funding. Additionally, the district vote by the Board of Directors approving a potential grant will be no sooner than July 1st of 2022. To qualify for any funding from the MSBA, local communities must follow the MSBA statutes and regulations which require MSBA partnership and approval for each of the steps processed. The district eligibility period will commence on June 1st of 2020 and conclude, and conclude on February 26, 2021. During this time, the district must complete the preliminary requirements in accordance with the schedule on page three of this letter. It's a nice little letter. The first item that requires, and I can go through that process. But I just wanted to bring forth that we've been invited. We were one of 11 communities out of 61. I got to speak today, and it was pretty awesome in the fact that we were invited in, and listening to the other superintendents saying that this was their third time around. This was their fifth time around. We were the only community that was our first time around. And I asked, and I, Deb Goldberg is the treasurer of the state, and she is the chair of this committee. And my comment was, I don't know if we're lucky because we're the only ones that got up front, or it's because our building is in such bad shape. I think it's a combination of both. I think when we came, they came out and did the senior study. They saw the commitment on behalf of the facilities department, holding together a building with, with, I said today, paperclips and rubber bands. They also saw the commitment of the communities to want a better education for the students. They commended Ernie that day, that he did a yeoman's job of keeping a building running on little funds, and the fact that it was in such good shape. And I think we're a model because of this high school. So we were the, we were the only out of the 11 that, who was their first SOI. And I felt pretty privileged, and I think we did a really good job of putting forth that SOI. What is clear is that this is eligibility. This isn't feasibility. And I will report out as we go through the process. There's a 30-day requirement, a 60-day requirement, a 90-day, 180-day requirement. So this doesn't mean the town is voting on a $75 million, $110 million project in May. I will inform the committee, I will inform the Whitman FinCom and Whitman Board of Selectmen to this. Dr. Kowalski and Mr. Lyneum got this letter today as well. This came in this afternoon. It was a lousy trip into Boston, but it was a very fun trip on the way home from Boston today. So I just wanted to share some really good news with the committee. And as we move our district forward for higher-quality education, I think it starts in Whitman with a new Whitman Middle School.
The only thing I would add is that, remember in April, the selectmen in Whitman voted 4-0 to go forward with the SOI. And so we've been in contact with them throughout this whole process also.
And just for people that may be watching this evening, I've been through a couple of these. I think Fred was, some of the other committee members said, this is a four- to five-year process.
Yes.
This isn't tomorrow, next spring, next week, appoint a committee. This is a four- to five-year process of doing this, from now.
To the end.
To the end. Just so people could, tomorrow somebody's up, they'll say, we're going to start digging the hole.
They, they were saying it's five to seven.
Right.
So it's a five-to-seven-year process from this eligibility to actually, you know, christening the building.
Cleaning the windows.
Yes.
Which isn't even today for eligibility. You said June 1st, 2020.
Correct.
Okay.
Continuing on facilities. We're pleased to hear that the district has received from the Safer Schools Grant that the town of Whitman was participating in. We've received a sum of money, or half the payments so far, which we're cautiously optimistic will get to keep and then be funded with the balance. The project needs to be completed by 12:31. And that's the thumb locks, the vestibule doors, and if I'm not mistaken, a rear.
Receiving door.
Receiving door. Over at Whitman Middle. Once the work is all completed, we have until the 15th of January to turn the paperwork in. They'll do the final audit, and then hopefully we'll receive a total of $60,000 from them. Right now, they've given us a check for $29,316.70, but it is subject to being called back. So as soon as the money is going to be completely allocated, it would be my hope, and I would bring a motion forward at that time, that we reimburse the town of Whitman for what was spent.
Okay, that's it.
That's pretty much it for the.
Any questions for Mr. Small?
Was there a discussion about the Duval roof?
We have brief discussion as to what had occurred or has occurred, you know, in the past. You know, what, you know, the situation right now is, we're waiting on the clawback period to end. And there'll be a Statement of Interest submitted for an accelerated grant program to fix the deficiency.
It takes 20 years on a, on a program, and it's coming up. It's actually coming up.
Right, it's next year.
It's like 19 right now, before you can apply for accelerated repair.
And what are the repairs that?
It's within the ether system and the flashing. I believe that's, is that the correct terminology? Mr. Jones is more well-versed than I am, but I believe I'm correct in the way I'm saying it.
I guess I'm just wondering, what is the repair? Is this a water issue?
It's a water, water issue with a specific wind-driven rain. The way the flashing was done originally.
Like we just had yesterday.
I'm sorry?
Like we just had yesterday.
Yeah, although some days you'll get that pouring rain, and you won't get a drop of water in the school. It'll be perfect. And then you catch a wind from a certain direction, and it's a mist, and you've got water coming in.
It happened, Don, if you're familiar with it, where they put an addition on. I crawled up in it.
Yeah, up from the library.
Exactly. Stood on a bookcase, and where it meets, and it flashed. It almost looks like a separation of building, like it's settled. And the flashing, I'm not a roofer, but I'd done some project. It didn't look right to me, but it's there, and it only happens, as Ernie said. And I wasn't sitting in the meeting, but I was up in the roof at certain range, which sounds crazy, but it's true.
Yeah, and the storm that was really impacted was considered by FEMA to be a 100-year storm. That was back in 2015.
That was the record, snowfall.
Yes.
Ice dam.
With the ice dams, et cetera.
Any other questions for Mr. Small? Okay, thanks, Fred. Legislative update?
Back up again.
How about it?
In their infinite wisdom, our leaders at the State House, between the Senate and the House, have not been able to get together on the FY19 supplemental bill that was appropriating at minimum $2.2 million, I believe, in regional transportation and some other monies. But it's the regional transportation piece that we have a big stake in, so to speak. The Senate, when they had done their supplemental to spend this money, they were at $5.2 million. So they wanted to give us more. We don't know which came out of House, the ways and means between the House and the Senate. But where they haven't gotten together and approved it, it is now being threatened by the Controller of the Commonwealth of Mass. And it was supposed to happen today, but he gave a one-day reprieve that they've supposedly made a lot of headway. But if he takes the money back, it goes into the rainy day fund, and we kiss it goodbye. So this is what our state, and our state reps are fighting for us, but there's only so much they can do when you're talking, because it's the leadership. And, you know, they'd rather, and I'll say it, screw us and get their own way, so to speak.
Why do these adults keep getting elected, and they can't do their job?
Anything else, and that's it?
That's it.
Any questions for Mr. Small?
Student Opportunity Act was signed into law a couple of weeks ago, and that'll mean, well, as Jeff had alluded to, the special ed transportation subject to appropriation, 25% reimbursement the first year, 50% the second, 75% the third. And then the fourth year, it goes up to 100%, but again, it's all subject to appropriation. There is also some language that changes the circuit breaker amounts, making it a little bit easier for us to hit that amount. So theoretically, seeing a little bit more of the 75% reimbursement on circuit breaker.
Chairman, can I add a comment? Just to get back to George and the ELL population that we have in regards to the Student Opportunity Act. You may hear in the news that, you know, a lot of this money is being infused to low-income and ELL populations in gateway cities, Springfield, Taunton, Worcester. But those cities have upwards of, I don't know, 25% ELL? And although we've gone from five kids to 79, 79 kids out of 3,800 is still only 2%.
It was still a low-incidence district. You only, you only get higher at a 100 cap is when you have to go into different sets of regulations. So we're still low, except for us, we're growing rapidly.
Exactly. It's growing, and we need to add staff. But yet, it's not enough to grow to receive more state aid or Chapter 70 from this Student Opportunity Act. It's a difficult situation.
Catch 22. Okay. Mr. Voice?
Pilgrimage Collaborative, we are moving as of Monday. We will be out of Pembroke. Thank you, Hatchville. Thank you Hatch Building. For all those members who are here, we will be down at the Pilgrim Academy in Plymouth. We did not meet this month nor will we meet next month, but we'll resume in February. And I will get updates from the executive director and share that as...
Any questions for Mr. Boyce? Okay. Dates to remember, December 23rd, 2019 to January 1st, 2020. Sounds like a long way off, but it's not. It's a holiday recess. There will be no school. January 2nd, 2020, all students pre-K to 12 will be returning. January 15th, 2020, is our next school committee meeting here in the library at 7:00. Yes, Mr. Small?
Could I give a quick plug for something? The Whitman Police are having Stuff a Cruiser on Sunday.